Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing Town of Asouias Fourshore and Lake Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1294 dot zero one two thousand and fifteen. And it's three thirty P. M. in council chambers. The first thing that I am going to do is read a statement from the Chair. And I think it will be put up on the board there. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section eight ninety of the Local Government Act, R. S. B. C., nineteen ninety-six, to allow the public to make presentation to counsel respecting matters contained in Town of Asouias Fourshore and Lake Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number one two nine four dot zero one two thousand and fifteen. Every person present who believes that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaw. When speaking, please proceed to the microphone and commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. And if I could also ask you, please, just, there is a paper there that when you come up, would you please sign in? Okay? If they wish, members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, the function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. In accordance with the Council Procedure Bylaw, presentations by members of the public shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes each. If a person has additional information that he is unable to provide within that timeframe, he shall be given further opportunity to address council after all other interested members of the public have been heard a first time. Please refrain from applause or other expressions of emotion during this public hearing so that we may ensure as impartial a hearing as possible. After this public hearing is adjourned, council members will not speak to the public on this matter until after the matter has been dealt with at a public meeting. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the presentations made at this hearing. Mr. Cunningham, are you going to do the confirmation of advertising, or am I going to do that?
You can do that.
Okay. Confirmation of advertising and posting requirements. Notice of this public hearing was given in accordance with the Local Government Act and the Community Charter by distributing the notices follows: in two consecutive editions of the Asouias Times on May the twentieth and May twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen; placing the notice on the bulletin boards in the Town Hall and Planning and Development Services Department on May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen; and posting on the town's website, May twentieth, two thousand and fifteen; and distributed via e-news on May the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen. And you will see that the two, the next two things are the notices that were in the Asouias Times. And now we have a report from Mr. Cunningham, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'll struggle through this. I got a bit of a croaky voice, but I should be able to manage to do it all. The Paradise Park Lessies Association, represented by Randy North, is seeking to build a new dock facility in Solana Bay, funding their RV park at five nine oh one Main Street. See the location on the attached photo image. A rezoning is required under the Town of Asouias Fourshore and Lake Zoning Bylaw one two nine four two twelve for Paradise Park to replace their existing private dock with a new, larger strata dock for mooring ten boats and to retain fifteen of their current twenty-five private buoys. Council has given first and second readings to attach Fourshore and Lake Zoning Bylaw Amendment Number one two nine four point oh one two fifteen and set the public date for June first, three thirty P. M. in council chambers, which is why we're here today. Overview. First, some comments on the proposed group strata merge facility. The location and size of the proposed merge facility is shown in the attached diagrams. The dock would measure thirty meters in length by two point four meters in width, and the access ramp connecting it to the beach is proposed to be one point two meters in width by eleven point seven meters in length. The dock would have two end fingers of seven point three meters by one point two meters and four lesser side fingers of six meters by point seven six meters. The overall dock service is, surface is proposed to be ninety-five point five eight square Property context. The proposed strata merge facility would extend into Solana Bay to serve the Paradise Park RV Resort property, which is zoned as a recreational vehicle residential strata resort, R. eight, and contains sixty-nine lease lots. Lakeshore properties adjacent to the subject property are characterized as single-family residential, with most of them having private docks. Regulatory context. Solana Bay is within Crown tenure, and provincial approval is required for changing the dock facility. In support of the application to the Ministry of Forest Lands and Natural Resources, M. F. L. N. R. O., I wish they had changed that name, the applicant submitted an environmental impact assessment, E. I. A. report, from Brian Jantsch of Lake Stream Environmental Services, dated June two thirteen. The ministry eventually granted preliminary approval with subject town rezoning approval under our Fourshore and Lake Zoning Bylaw. This bylaw was approved by the, by council on two twelve to promote lake environmental sustainability, protect water use safety, avoid overloading our finite resource base, ensure access by various user groups, and promote other public purposes. The bylaw covers that portion of Asouias Lake within our municipal boundaries, which generally extend out about one hundred meters from the high watermark. The bylaw contains four zones, each with their own permitted uses and development regulations, i.e. W. one, public water use, W. two, private mortgage, W. three, group strata mortgage, and W. four, commercial mortgage. Paradise Park's existing W. T. zoning permits a maximum density of three berths per waterfront property with a maximum size of twenty-four square meters and does not permit group strata mortgage. The W. three zoning would permit, would permit group strata mortgage facilities up to thirty meters in length, but not, does not provide for private buoys. The proposed mortgage facility meets the requirements of the W. three zoning regulations in terms of length, width, and setbacks, but the rezoning has to be made site-specific to allow up to a maximum of fifteen private buoys in addition to a dock for this particular location. The proposed mortgage will improve water use safety and provide a more orderly approach for securing boats. Increasing the dock size as proposed is not seen to negatively impact adjacent owners or other water users, as the total number of boats that could be accommodated will not increase. Brian Jantsch of Environmental Services will be on-site to supervise installation of all works to ensure they meet the proper provincial protocols. Implications. Community benefits our resort industry by enabling the Paradise Park RV, RV resort to improve the merge facilities. Organizational. This report was prepared with assistance of an R. D. S. planner under our contractual arrangements for development applications, budget not applicable. Significant dates. And this is significant. According to the Provincial Ministry of Environment, installation of the dock can safely proceed after July first, when spring spawning is over. Sustainability. The project will not have any adverse environmental impacts and may indeed create a net gain by reducing the existing number of buoys. Options. One, after the public hearing, council could immediately open to a regular meeting, and I should correct that, it would be a special open meeting, so it could, could immediately open to a special open meeting, and consider giving third reading to the bylaw amendment, or council may wait until the next regular meeting on July fifteenth, June fifteenth, two fifteenth, to consider third reading.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. We are now going to have a look at the correspondence that has been received on this, and, and then we will have public presentations. So we do have a letter. I'm wondering if it's appropriate for me to read the letter, or perhaps Mr. or Mrs. Evans, are they here? No. How about Mr. and Mrs. Evans? Are they here? Okay. Does that seem appropriate for me to read out the letters? Okay. So I'll read both of these letters. One was just delivered today, and one is in the, would be in here. Yeah. And it would be available on the screen, I think. Dear Mr. Cunningham, Re-amendment to Fourshore and Lake Bylaws Number one two nine four dot two zero one two. We are not in favor of having this amendment changed for private mortgage to group strata mortgage, allowing for a new bylaw amendment for, to be made for fifteen private buoys to be retained in addition to construction of a new dock. This is too close to our home. We do live in a much quiet, nice residential area surrounded by peaceful neighbors and lovely homes, as well as a trailer court close by. The only setback we do have is this Okanagan RV Sales and Service Center right behind us, whose traffic does come through part of our neighborhood and along the west side of our house. They do have, on the east side, open gate entrance from Lakeshore Drive. We are seniors now, in our declining years, and we would like very much to have, to retain having most of this tranquility, which we presently have here in our neighborhood, especially now during those summer months. Thank you cordially, Morris and Vera Evans. And there's another one here, from Warren Bernice Evans. In regard to the notice of public hearing scheduled for Monday, June the first pertaining to the amendment to Fourshore and Lake Bylaw Number one two nine four two thousand and twelve, our response is as follows. We are opposed to the amendment as outlined for the following reasons. One, the bay is not large enough to accommodate the larger dock as proposed or the fifteen private buoys that have been suggested. Two, the current situation with the speed limit of ten miles per hour, which is not always followed, combined with the presence of swimmers and people on flotation devices, presents a potentially dangerous situation with the existing traffic volume. Adding an additional ten to twenty-five watercraft will likely result in a tragic event for which the township could be held liable. Three, the environmental concerns regarding this amendment should give us pause, to say the least. The reduced water exchange within the bay is already an issue. More boats could further compound the problems resulting from this issue. The species presently inhabiting the bay could be put at risk. An environmental impact assessment would need to be performed to determine if any of the proposed changes would be contraindative to the continued survival of the existing flora and fauna. The proposed changes would have a detrimental effect on the quiet serenity of the area we now enjoy and have paid for. Any development on this scale will likely have a negative impact on the neighborhood and, as such, affect our property values. The bay area residents would have potential cause for legal action should these changes result in a financial loss for the affected properties. Five, with more water traffic comes the increased potential for criminal activity. Six, trespassing through the private properties from the water is already a problem. Increased traffic would only exacerbate the situation. Seven, throughout the summer months, the aforementioned problems would likely result in the township having to increase neighborhood patrols, which would obviously come an additional expense. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I'm wondering, Mr. Cunningham, did you say that there was an environmental assessment report?
Yes. I, I mentioned it in my report, and it was prepared by Brian Jantsch of Lake Stream. It's called Environmental Impact Assessment for Redevelopment of a Dock at Paradise Park. And it was prepared for the Paradise Park Lessies Association, and it's a very comprehensive document, which I have reviewed. And in my opinion, it addresses the possibility that there would be any adverse ecological impacts, and to, to my mind, the conclusion is no, in, in the opinion of the, of the author.
Was this presented at the annual, annual general meeting of the Paradise Park Resort It wa, it wasn't? Okay. So, we're now going to go on to public presentations, and, and as you heard, we will be, we will be happy to listen to what you, to what you have to say. Council can ask questions, and, and then there will not be, we are not going to be intuited debate about this at this point. We're just asking you to present what you would like to say on this issue. So when you come up to the microphone, would you please state your name and your address and sign the form that Ms. Scott has left there for you on the microphone? So is there, who would like to be first? Sarah, would you like to please come up?
My name's Sarah Vanderhuben. I reside at five nine nine two Chillicothe, dear folks across in Chillicothe, B. C. I also have a residence at five nine zero one Main Street, Lot sixty-six, in Paradise
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi.
You need to speak into the microphone. This is on, this is broadcast on Granicus for other people to hear publicly.
Okay. So, I came into this park two years ago and kind of got thrown into this miscommunication information here, there, and from everywhere, and really in the last nine months have taken a big interest in what's actually happening out front in that bay. There's so much miscommunication just from the, within the park, from the president, the vice president, Mr. Jantsch I've never met. I think that it would have been a very important thing for him to have been in attendance in our AGM to explain what exactly it is that we're looking at doing here with this forshore. My first question would be, what is our legal right in that bay? What do we actually own? I took it upon myself to go to a lawyer in Abbotsford. His name is Lauren Wellwood. He put me in touch with another lawyer who is highly involved with the court authority, knows a little more about water than, I mean, hey, I just bought a boat two years ago. I don't know too much about crown land, forshore, learning along the way. He, his first question to me was, okay, let's look at land titles. Let's see what you got. So we went to land titles and pulled the plans. From what he sees, the only part of that bay that is actually crown land is one of the lots to the right was rezoned a number of years ago, nineteen eighty-seven, and that forshore was given back to crown land. He sees nowhere else on that bay that he can see as being crown land. He said, you're dealing with a slew. It was originally a slew. My first question to you guys as council is, where is the natural occurring high watermark in that bay?
Did you want, I, I think that that can be...
I think Mr. Jantsch should, should respond to that particular issue, and with regard to the ownership of land, the situation here is that the water is not in Crown tenure. I'm sorry.
Mr. Cunningham, you need to speak forward.
I'm really bad at this. So, so an application had to be made to, to the Crown because it is under their control before it ever came to the town. And that was done, that was done properly, and it was a very full and comprehensive report that was submitted accompanying the application, and the province have approved it.
That's nice for you to have that. Me, as an owner, I would have loved to have seen that.
Yeah, well, I think that you, if I might say so, should have been talking to the trustees of the Paradise Park.
Oh, I talked.
Yeah, okay. Well, there seems, there seems to be an internal issue there. Usually when I get an application signed off by the president of the park, I assume it's representing all the interests in that, in that particular park. If it is not, then that's an issue that has to be dealt with internally. This council cannot deal with that.
Right. But what you can deal with is my question of where is the natural occurring high watermark in that bay?
Well, there would be, well, it's, normally, if you, if you go down, if you go down and look, you'll, you'll find that there's a natural vegetation line between high and low mark and low watermark, so it is usually readily seen. There's a different type of vegetation between low and high, and if you go down there, you'll probably be able to see it.
Okay. So my next question would be, why the rezoning has to be changed? What, as the owners of this park, we want to know, why did we come to, who came to you and asked for this rezoning?
Because looking for, pardon me, losing my voice here, looking for doing some, something else. So what they previously had, or currently have, is the W. two zoning.
Right.
And it allows a dock, but it does not allow a group strata dock. That's what's been specifically allowed for, or, or applied for here. And in that particular case, we have a separate zone to cover that, our W. three zone. So the, it's like a rezoning. It would be like a rezoning from single-family housing to apartment if it was on land. So we're talking about a different type of use here. So application had to be made to go from W. two to W. three zoning.
Okay.
And as I said, it had to be made site-specific. It's a W. three S. zone because it does not allow for any buoys. So we also appended to that a requirement that the number of buoys could be reduced from twenty-five to fifteen.
Okay. Excuse me, can I, you've had five minutes. I'm just wondering, you can certainly come back up again, but I think I'd like to, to be fair, to allow other people to do that, is, thank you very much.
Sure.
And, and is there someone else who would like to come up and speak? The reason that we put the, this public meeting at this time was because we knew that there was going to be a, an annual general meeting of all of the members at Paradise Park, and we wanted that, to make sure that that happened correctly first before we dealt with this. No one else would like to speak? How about the gentleman who did the report? No? No?
No.
Would you like me to make any comments?
Um, there's, if, I, I think that might be helpful. Could you come up to the microphone?
Thank you. My name is Brian Jantsch, and I operate Lake Stream Environmental Services. Would you like me to sign in here?
Yes, please. Is the president here? I don't know. Okay. Could we let Mr. Jantsch make a presentation first, and then we have some questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Relative to the decision on where the, where Crown Land starts, it's well understood that on Asouias Lake, the Ministry of Environment and the Department of Fisheries and Oceans historically have decided or determined that the Asouias Lake high watermark is at two hundred and seventy-eight point two meters above sea level. For purposes of any works that take place at or near the high watermark, it has been determined that any property below that high watermark is Crown property. And so in, in this particular case, we had to prepare a, an environmental impact assessment and provide that to the Ministry of Environment, to the lands branch, to determine what works that we were proposing both above and below the high watermark. Now, Crown Lands in the province have the jurisdiction of looking after any docks that are placed on water, or either floating or on pilings, below the high watermark. So in this case, we made our application to them, and they are also the agency responsible for designating the various dock uses, and what sizes of docks can be allowed there, and what activities can be allowed around those docks. I don't know that I can say anything more to that.
Okay.
Other than that, I don't know, was there, was there any other questions that needed to be answered?
Could, is there anybody in council? Does anybody have a, I guess, one thing, and I'm not sure whether you're the right person to answer it, but it seems to me that what was happening down there now with, with the W. two mortgage was a certain number of boats, depending on the property. With the W. three mortgage, it's the same number of boats. It's just organized slightly differently with, with a dock and some buoys. Am I correct in that? Do you know that, or?
Yes, yes, you are. But also, the W. three designation allows for a larger dock than the W. two. I mean, these, there are limits to the size of dock that you can have as a private residence and as a, a strata residence, and also as a commercial. And in this case, one of the reasons that we had to move up to a W. three designation was to allow for the size that we needed to get the number of ten slips on, on this dock to accommodate the number of boats that are in the, in the bay. And our attempt was to not increase the number of boats in the bay, but rather to reorganize them in a better fashion.
That's, that was my thinking, that there really is the same number of boats going to be there, it was just reorganized in a slightly different fashion. Am, am I correct in that? Because it, I think that may be where some of the people are misinterpreting it. They're assuming that there's going to be a lot more boats.
That's certainly been my understanding from the beginning with respect to this application, that we weren't talking about it, any increase in the total number of boats, but there would be, as Mr. Jantsch says, a reorganization. The, there would be more boats that would be moored to, to the dock, and there would be a reduction in the number of, of boats which are moved to private buoys, which in situations like this can, can be the more destructive intrusion into the substrate of, of the lake in that particular area. So we, we saw this as, as a gain, and it's also a necessity because the present zone allows, as Mr. Jantsch says, only for smaller docks or intended for people with, basically with single-family homes, and they have a dock for their own personal use, not for an RV park.
Right. Okay, thank you. Counselor Youngberg.
Yes, thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Mr. Jantsch, how long is the existing dock? What size is that dock? I didn't go to the very end of my packet.
If you just bear with me here, I've got all of the, the diagrams for the existing and, and the new dock configuration. The existing dock is, presently has an on-ramp of six point one meters and extends eighteen point three meters into the bay. The proposed dock will have the, sorry, just, the eighteen point three meter section will simply be moved out into deeper water to accommodate the depth needed for the boats, with an on-ramp, which is one point two meters wide, which will provide access to that main dock. So the, the actual dock itself is, is not being increased in size other than the fingers that are being added to it, but the on-ramp, which is, will likely be an aluminum structure, which will span from the... which will span from the shore to this dock that's moved out, um, will be required so that that dock can be moved into deeper water to accommodate the boats we want to put on it.
So, therefore, the, the actual length of it will be what?
The actual length with, with the on-ramp will be thirty meters, uh, even.
Okay, so about ninety feet.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor King?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McCorduff. I guess just with the comment of the young lady that spoke first, I, I don't know, it sounded like there wasn't a resolution from the strata in support of this wholly, so I, I kinda can't make a decision right now unless that's not fact.
So, my name is Lance Keisley. I'm a resident at the park. Uh, let's see, so, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Is the president of the, uh, of the resort association...
She is not here right now.
Are you representing him? Your board of directors?
Part of the board of directors.
I think that would be helpful.
Sort of a member-at-large, kinda. No person, yeah.
Good. So, when you do that, can you fill us in a little bit about what happened and on, uh, at the annual general meeting? And, uh, and so that we're a little clearer on that.
Yeah, I don't have a copy of the minutes or anything like that, so I will be going by what I remember. Uh, so, we did have our annual general, general meeting. One of the key things there was talking about, uh, the ongoing application with, uh, the provincial and the town governments towards the, the dock. This has been going on for three years?
Yeah, something like that.
It's, it's a long process to make sure you get everything covered. Uh, so, we did have our annual general meeting. Uh, it did have its quorum, okay? I believe we had maybe forty...
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. We had thirty-four...
Out of sixty-nine.
Out of sixty-nine represented in some fashion, okay? Uh, so, that meets our quorum. Now, generally, like the park, it is an RV sort of, you know, let's say it's, it's an RV park.
Okay.
Right? So, a lot of people there, it's summer. We come for the summer, right? Our annual general meeting is kind of in the early spring. If I got that right? Yep. Uh, so, it's, it's always been a, kind of one of these things where we always hope we get enough for quorum, okay? Uh, communications have always been a bit of a challenge for the park, uh, simply because it's been around for a long time. Uh, people come and go, like again, summer was our, was our big time. So, as a result, the directors of the society are the ones that try and keep things kind of moving around, okay? In the annual general meeting, it was brought up. It was passed again that we did want to continue with the dock process, okay? Uh, some of the votes were very, very tight, maybe like one or two votes difference, but it was still the majority present did pass, and we do wish to continue with the process, yeah.
So, have I read your minutes? I see a resolution saying that you passed a motion to move this dock forward?
I believe, yes, yes, you would.
I don't want to believe, I want to know.
No, you, you would.
Okay, thank you.
I believe that that was why we passed the first and second reading of it because we knew that that had happened at the meeting. We got notification.
Yep.
Yes.
And it was also a requirement from the provincial government that specific wording of one of the resolutions had to be there, talking about the legal description of the property.
Yes. Did you have another question?
This is for Mr. Cunningham. With your environmental assessment done two years ago, is there more constraints now on an assessment compared to two years ago, in your opinion?
Uh, not in this particular case. It, uh, Brian can, uh, correct me on this, but, uh, um, what they got in terms of approval was a section nineteen, uh, to be able to do works in the water. Uh, there was no riparian, uh, permit required by us nor there was their, uh, application to the province in that particular respect. Um, I think it's true to say, uh, Mr. Jans, that the, uh, the requirements for riparian permits per se have become a little bit more rigorous, but they don't apply in this particular case.
Thank you.
Would that be a correct interpretation?
Yes, yes, that would be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did, did anyone else have any other questions? Lance? Um, just, just a minute, when, are you then, did you have anything more to add?
I think that was, I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, we did have our annual general...
And we appreciate that. That's what we assumed.
And it has been going on for like two, three years every time, okay?
Thank you very much. Do we have another speaker?
My name is Ken Salisbury. I live, uh, in Coquitlam on Harrison Avenue. I also have a place in Paradise Park. I've probably been one of the directors for ten, twelve, a bunch of years. I actually was absent at the AGM, but I have the minutes. And it has been passed, like, uh, there's not that many people. I believe it was seventeen, sixteen to proceed with the wings or slips or whatever. Since the meeting, I've been asked questions, I have questions. Uh, I just asked Mr. Jans, we're assuming this is going ahead. If it does go ahead, is it mandatory? We stick with the actual measurements of the slips, the access ramp? The park's using money. Several people prior to the meeting were in favor of putting it out, the thirty feet. Now, the slip this year, next year, whatever. Uh, this, without wings, you can park six boats. With wings, you can park ten boats. If, can it be passed and as long as we meet the proper criteria, add wings at our leisure? It has been passed in the park to, to go ahead with it. I've since had questions on the ramp. If this dock gets moved out, uh, thirty feet, it's possible to have a fifty-foot ramp, four foot wide to access. I'm thinking for safety alone, people coming back and forth. So, I would myself personally want to look at that access ramp. You know, people coming and going with whatever. I don't believe four foot's wide enough. So, that is my question. If this is passed, can we move it out, meet your W-three? Whether we do wings this year, six months from now? And can we change measurements? A- as long as we don't change the, the footprint itself, we'll pass our GPS reading, the length of the dock, that type of thing. That's Brian. Brian believes you can kind of change, do a little bit, so...
Okay. What we're being asked to do is, the only thing we're being asked to do, not the measurements and that type of thing, is we're just being asked to, okay, that it, that it goes from, uh, to W-three zoning. And if all the requirements of that, and I'm sure you have a copy of the W-three zoning requirements, Mr. Cunningham would have provided that. If you fill that, those requirements, that's all that is necessary for the town. What you put out there is, uh, is, I believe, uh, Mr. Cunningham, can you comment on that? I, I'm not sure that we're even in that business.
Yeah. Um, what I would say is that, um, yeah, there are, there are some, uh, requirements which are laid out in our zoning in terms of, uh, dimensions. And, uh, I would, uh, if we're going to be flexible in this regard, uh, but to safeguard, safeguard, uh, council, uh, I would, uh, request that, uh, Mr. Jensen, uh, before the actual construction of any work, submitted drawings to myself as to specifically what it is that you're intending to proceed with so that I myself can confirm that it's going, going to be conforming with the zoning.
And, and Mr. Jensen is going to oversee the building of this dock? Am I correct? So, that seems to make sense. Are you all right with that?
Yes.
Yes, good. Did you sign in there too? Okay, please do.
Can I just ask a few...
Yes.
In, um, working with Randy North through this whole process, uh, we, we went into this, um, with, with number one, um, making sure that we satisfied the local W-three designation rules. Uh, but there are also rules, um, issued by, uh, the province on, on what size these docks can be. And we, we're very careful that we try to keep our dimensions within those regulations. In, in my document, um, I discussed a number of building methods with, with Randy as far as whether this dock be constructed with, uh, aluminum, uh, whether it be on floats, whether it be on pilings. Uh, w- we looked at all the different aspects and we listed them as possible options uh, in, in our document to the lands branch. And the lands branch, uh, read all of our proposals and they did not have any concerns about any of the methods, any of the treatments, uh, of the wood, which we offered to treat off, off-water, on-land, and so on. We were very specific, uh, about the type of treatment of wood that we would use that would be environmentally friendly. And so, it was our, um, it was our goal also that, that Randy asked that, okay, we'll build the main dock and the two end fingers, but the other fingers would be built with an on-demand, uh, method. Uh, in other words, we might not build the whole thing all at once. Uh, it would be as, as needed, uh, as, as more of the, uh, strata members became interested in mooring their, their dock or their boats there. So, that's all I wanted to say.
No, and I thank you for that. So, that doesn't particularly concern council. Um, that would be between the, uh, the, the group at Paradise Park and you overseeing it to make sure it follows the, um, the legally required things from the province and, and so on. And Mr. Cunningham, who is, uh, has the, the mortgage facilities, uh, um, you know, the W-three zoning, uh, that was passed in two thousand and twelve. And we went to quite an extensive of, uh, of procedure in order to come up with, with things on our lake, to protect our lake. So, I don't think that we need to get into the, uh, the lengths of the docks and that type of thing. To me, that that's a separate issue and it doesn't concern council. Am I correct, Mr. Cunningham?
That is correct. It's somewhat equivalent to, uh, you rezoning, uh, something from an R-one to a R-two, which would allow duplexes.
Yes.
And, uh, it's not your concern to see that the duplexes are properly built. Um, we certainly can do that within staff.
Absolutely.
So, uh, I, I just would be looking for the confirmation, uh, that in fact, whatever is proposed now, because there seems to be some different ideas floating around, that whatever is done, it will be within the confines and parameters of our W-three zoning.
Right.
And, um, and whether, you know, if you want to build it in phases, that's again is, is something that is your business. Uh, we're not going to stipulate anything on that.
We will make that happen.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Rhodes had a question, and I wasn't sure who it was for. Excuse me, could you address the, things to the chair, please? And Councilor Rhodes has the floor.
Thank you, Mayor McCorduff. I have a question for, uh, Director Cunningham, I guess. Wondering about emergency access down there. You know, I know it's not a compelling reason to, you know, obstruct the rezoning at all, but, um, I'd say there was a boat fire or perhaps a drowning at the dock. Is there adequate access down to that dock?
Yes, I believe there is. There's, there's a clear way that you, you can get to it. And you can also get to it by, by water. Uh, as the strata may know, uh, we have other concerns, uh, more generally speaking, about access there. And there's a present restriction on adding any additions to RVs or other structures that might be there right now, uh, such as California rooms. But that's, that's another issue. So, um, the clear one here is not to do anything which would impede, uh, clear access to the dock. Uh, that needs to be avoided at all cost.
Okay.
Is that, is that covered in the documentation to this point?
Yes, it is.
Good. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? And I'll ask it for the third time. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? That being said, thank you, uh, thank you very much for all of you for coming and, and providing some input for us. Uh, and, um, Ms. Scott, we need a, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is that correct? And, uh, so, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Rhodes, um, all in favor of adjourning the meeting? Thank you very much.
Now, I must ask if you want to open up a special open meeting to proceed with third reading or not at this particular time. If you were to proceed on that basis, uh, because we have not advertised it in advance, it would require the unanimous approval by all councilors to take that particular step.
I am open to what council would like to do. Councilor Rhodes?
Um, typically, when you have public hearings like this, uh, I know there's been the odd exception, there's always a, a breathing period that's necessary to kind of weigh the pros and cons. And I would suggest that that would be my viewpoint at this time. I know, uh, on two occasions, we've had public hearings followed by meetings, but the circumstances were completely different. Um, I saw personally, I'd like a breathing period. I know it's a little bit of a delay and it always adds a, a level of discomfort to the people that are wanting to move forward with it. Uh, but I certainly feel that, you know, that little bit of a breathing period is very important to me.
Yeah, legally, it's called allowing for sober and second thought. And, uh, we, we, we quite often do it.
Okay. So, we will not have another, another meeting at this point? And, um, in, can I just ask one question? In order for this dock to proceed at some point, do they require a certain period of time in order to have it? Uh, like, can we delay this meeting for a week? Or would it be appropriate to bring it up, uh, perhaps at the June fifteenth meeting?
We, we can proceed immediately. Uh, the spawning period is over now. They couldn't have done the works previous to today. Uh, but now they, they have an opening, uh, for, for the rest of, rest of the summer, so... And, and given the fact that there seems to be some debate as to the exact facility that's in mind, I don't personally feel, uh, a delay of a few weeks one way or another will be, uh, um, too injurious in this particular case.
Thank you. That's what, I was thinking the same thing, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you all for coming and for participating in this. And, um, and please, uh, get together, and you guys all live in such a small area down there. Um, you need to be sure that what we're doing is, uh, is, is appropriate. Uh, but...